Full call for the open workshop is 6:19. Trustee Crew.
Present.
Trustee Desmond.
Here.
Trustee Finnerty.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Present.
Trustee Lawanda.
Here.
Trustee Munoz.
Present.
Trustee Ryan.
Here.
Vice President Will Bag.
Here.
President Brown.
Here.
Okay, we have a full staff tonight. I'll ask you to turn to your agendas. We have some additions since the package I sent home. I'll start with number one, communication. We received an additional retirement since the package I sent home to you.
That's the total of ten retirements this year. Ten so far.
And then I do have some business to take care of, special services. We'll start with number two. Progressive Therapy of New Jersey, a contract with them. They're to provide functional behavior services for a classified student that resides in Bayonne. This is going to be part of the consent agenda. Do I have two volunteers to move in second?
I'll move.
Okay, trustee Munoz. And seconded by trustee Crew. And as I'm doing this, you could skip ahead to number three, because I know we're on a tight schedule. That is another contract with data.
Did all these contracts offer big?
These special services do not. But if you've noticed over the year, they're usually coming in at ninety, seventy-five, they're all basically in that ballpark. But we don't go out to bid with these particular service contracts that go through child study.
Is there a reason why?
Those are the lowest prices, and they've actually been those prices. Mr. Smith, you can help me, but for the last couple of years, they've stayed pretty steady and consistent.
They're even lower than through the Ed Services Commission, these individual contractors. So we're quite happy with the rate that they provide us.
We had tabled number four from our previous meeting with in-line resolution. I know we made some changes, and I did send this home over the weekend. If anyone has any particular questions for Mr. Smith.
We did make the language change, or it's not an automatic renewal at the end of the year. We can revisit it, and we have sat down with in-line. This is approximately an eight percent reduction over last year's contract of the same scope of work, so to speak, and it's essential to the HVAC needs of the district.
Thank you.
I'll ask you all to turn to number five. These are new. You didn't get these over the weekend. This is a monthly resolution to make changes. For appropriation, transfers to line items and program categories in the existing budget. If there's any particular questions from Matt or Mr. Smith, I'll give you a chance to review the resolution.
You know, I do have one question about four. Can you go back to four for one second?
Sure, I can go back.
So, just out of curiosity, it's, all right, so when you refer to HVAC services, right, they are just cleaning all of the air conditioners in the district, correct?
Doing preventative maintenance.
Preventative maintenance.
Contract throughout the district, yes.
Okay, would it not be more cost-effective to hire HVAC person? I know we had this conversation. Would it not be more cost-effective to hire an HVAC person to have on staff instead of paying $186,000 a year, you pay someone $50,000 a year to do this preventative maintenance? I'm just...
We have tried to even have our own custodial staff trained through the Hudson County Vocational to get their certificate. This has been a pet peeve of mine for the last four or five years. We were going to go so far as to hire two of them with a truck to go building the building and put all of our buildings on a preventative maintenance schedule. We cannot get qualified people with those particular certificates and licenses for HVAC. They have to be, they have to handle freon, refrigerants, and what they do, their going rate in this contract, correctly if I'm wrong, Matt, I think is $72...
Seventy-three dollars an hour.
Seventy-three dollars an hour is what they get. We cannot get qualified people to come in at a starting salary of $39,900, which our custodians could get in that area. We have tried, we've tried training people to do little jobs, but it is quite difficult. We'll continue to search. We had it out online, we had it in NJjobs.com, and we did interview a few people, but they were unwilling. I went so far as to call the union, because the union halls were slow, and try to come up with a rate where you could send your guys to us to do this, and they wouldn't even touch it. So we have tried, trustee Munoz.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're back on number five. Any questions?
Actually, Matt, well, I'd just like Matt to tell everyone what he told us in finance, because I think it's important and it's also comforting that most of these movements are putting people in, or people, putting items in the right categories, right buckets. Actually, you can, you should tell them.
Well, it's each, each time we, so to get the payroll into the accounting system is a whole process, and I'm taking a lot of time to make sure we're budgeting in the right buckets. And going forward, you'll see a lot more of these, even with the eighteen budget, you know, I haven't had time to make sure people are all in the right spots yet. So there will be transfers this summer with the new budget. So it's very important to have the salaries, you know, fully encumbered early in the year, which we're going to be doing for the eighteen budget, you know, in the fall. So once you fully encumber your salaries and benefits, it helps you to manage the budget more efficiently, so. And as we get better and better, there'll be fewer and fewer transfers as we get people in the right spots going forward, so that's the game plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so number six. Number six is approval of staff to attend a workshop. It's covered by Title III, New Jersey Test Oil Spring Conference. Okay, you don't have...
Dr. Dagnan, what's Title III actually encompassing? I know you're the Mr. Title Man, so...
Title III is for English language acquisition, so this would be for the American students. TESOLs for teachers of English for students of other languages. This is the conference they go to every year, paid out of that grant for English language acquisition. Actually, we have teachers that go, and some of these teachers actually even present because they're experts in the field. So this is their conference.
I'm handing out...
So am I to assume, Dr. Dagnan, that during these three days, we're providing substitute teachers for all these, for all these teachers?
You would have to provide substitutes, yeah.
What's the cost to district for the substitute teachers? I can't, the math is hard to me, one, two, three, four, five, I don't know. What's it going to cost the district for the substitute teachers?
How much is it?
Is it ninety dollars a day?
Just subrate it.
Probably a thousand four hundred.
Teachers.
Right about ninety dollars a day for...
That's seventeen times ninety.
But they're not all classroom teachers. I don't think Monica Flynn, Marion Collins, they're not classroom.
I don't know that they're all classroom teachers. It doesn't, doesn't, doesn't mean that...
But they might not all need subs, is what I'm saying.
No, I'm just trying to figure out. I mean, yes, it's being paid by Title III, but out of the school board budget, what's it going to cost to pay for the sub, out of the school board budget?
A thousand five hundred and thirty.
That's if, that's if the three, the bottom three, trustee, the bottom three are, they're not, they're not in classrooms, so you would take three away from that, seventeen.
It's fourteen.
So it'd be fourteen.
One thousand five hundred and thirty dollars.
One, two, six, oh.
No, no, it's fourteen.
One, two, six, oh.
I didn't do my math right?
No, it's fourteen times...
It's one, two, six, oh.
Trustee Finnerty, if this is something that you want, I could probably put the breakdown of how much subs is going to be on every resolution, but remember, sometimes there's some staff members that go, that they're inclusion, they stay back, they're covered by a general ed teacher.
I don't know.
I guess you're looking at fourteen hundred dollars?
One, two, six, oh. All right, in a round scheme of things, I guess it doesn't really amount that much. I was just wondering what, I could see that attending the conference is four thousand thirty-three, got that, and I'm looking at like seventeen teachers, I don't know how many are aides, how many are, you know, full-time teachers, just looking at ninety, not a problem. Just wondering to know how much it's going to cost the district over and above the Title III.
Hey, I don't have that number.
One thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, one thousand two hundred and sixty.
I got one thousand five hundred and thirty, my math.
It's fourteen, it's fourteen, not seventeen.
Well, some of them are administrators, so they don't have subs, so I think it's fourteen total, times the sub rate.
Okay.
Again, if this is something that the board requests, I can put the sub price on all the resolutions.
You...
But it could change.
Well, if it's essential to the NCLB, then, I mean, you make it happen. I was just wondering at what cost to the district, considering what the budgetary issues are right now.
All right, so now we know.
Absolutely understand.
Okay, thank you.
Number seven, you haven't seen this, it's Essex Regional Education Service Commission, and it's a contract with them for services to public school students when placed in a facility. Facility home instruction services at a rate of forty-three dollars and thirty cents per hour. Does anyone have a question?
When you talk about facility, you're talking about hospital and...
It's a residential facility for a BD student. I don't even know her issues, I would not be able to give you, but we cannot send our home instruction tutor out to Newark there, there's nobody can, willing to go out there to do it in that facility.
Okay, what I just handed out, if you give me a minute, because it is confusing, it will be number eight. We originally, we originally had our May meeting scheduled for the 24th, which was moved to the 31st. There is no longer a conflict on the 24th, so if you want, we can move our public meeting back to the original date of the 24th. Obviously, that frees us up with an extra week to possibly, if things go well, bring some more people back, which is, I know, one of the intentions of the board, and, you know, that week might make a difference between someone leaving and staying. So I throw...
June 24th is Saturday, so it's May.
May, may. Well, like I said, it's a confusing resolution, so let me give you the breakdown. I guess the question I'm asking you is, do we want to keep the meeting on the 31st, or we would like to go back to the 24th?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Okay, now, there's a second part to this question.
I'm a 31st guy.
Don't you have to make sure we have enough for 24?
Yeah.
That's what we're...
Well, that's what I'm asking right now. You guys have to decide if you want to go to the 24th, or you want to stay at the 31st. So we need to answer that question first.
Okay.
Twenty-fourth.
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 Thirty-first.
I can't be here 31st.
Me either.
And I can't be here on the 24th.
All right, so let's have a sharp hand.
Who could be here on the 24th? Who could be here on the 24th?
Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Who could be here on the 31st? I could be...
I would rather have my, I want to have my president and vice presidents, I will keep it to 31st, so. The two resolutions that are combinations of May and June, we're going to get rid of those. So now my question is, I had asked last workshop, the June meeting, our original date, unfortunately, there's a conflict with graduations. So I asked you to take a look at either June 12th or June 22nd. So it's Monday, June 12th, or Thursday, June 22nd, is our open workshop. So if there's a poll on which one you'd like me to pick?
June 12th to 22nd?
Yeah.
It's either Monday, June 12th, or it's Thursday, June 22nd. The original date was June 15th, which is graduation, so there's the conflict.
Well, how many could be here, I guess, or which one would, I'm good either date, so, and the 12th?
Thursdays are easier than Mondays for me, but I'll do whatever the majority does. I'll just... I like the 22nd, gives us more time between the two meetings. We're going to have a May 31st meeting. I'd much prefer June 22nd as opposed to a June 12th.
It's a workshop.
And then the public meeting for June, the regular public meeting is the 28th, just as a FYI.
Do any of these dates conflict with the graduation dates of any of the grammar schools?
No.
No, that's the original date, yes. These two dates, there are no conflicts.
Whatever.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. What, did we pick one?
Nope.
Okay, so we're looking at either Monday, June 12th, or Thursday, June 22nd.
It's a Thursday.
Thursday? I'm good with Thursday.
I'm just thinking about the ton difference between the two meetings.
Anybody opposed, anybody opposed to the 22nd then? That's the Thursday one?
No.
Okay, how about the 22nd?
Okay, so we're going to go with Thursday, the 22nd. That's number eight. Okay, now, that is the consent agenda. Okay, so moved by trustee Munoz, seconded by trustee Crew. Okay, number nine, our school budget. Now, Matt and Leo and our attorneys, obviously, if there's any discussion that needs to be done in the public in regards to number nine, we can do out here, anything that's obviously needs to be done in closed session, we will finish the discussion inside before we sign the resolution. I know finance had a meeting, I don't know if we want to give an overview of, I guess, a combination of what happened Thursday in Trenton and this budget, and bring everybody up to date, and everybody will be on the same page. Okay, so you have number nine in front. I'll turn it over.
If you, I could give the quick overview date as far as...
Trenton?
Trenton.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Then these gentlemen can fill in on the budget. Just as a, we went down to Trenton last Thursday, as you guys are well aware of, I think. We met with Speaker Freido and Commissioner Harrington. We, it was set up by someone in Chevalotte. We got there, the meeting was at 10:30, I believe. Everybody seemed to be very cooperative with us, that they listened to us. The meeting actually lasted, I believe, over an hour and a half. Everybody got to speak, we explained to them our issues, where we're coming from. We discussed things such as the rod grant, which, at that point, their answer to us was that it's a statute, basically, rod grant can't be moved. They did go on to tell us, though, that, that we were probably going to receive, or we are going to probably receive a monitor, a state monitor, who would come and look over our financial matters, and hopefully with that, they said, would come with a loan that would be interest-free. Now, as far as how soon the loan would be here, that I couldn't tell you, maybe someone else understood it better than I did. And the amount was also not told us. We, Dr. McGinn also asked Speaker Freido that, he's trying to pass a bill right now that would give money to districts that are in need of it, and she specifically said, how's Bayonne doing in that? And, which was a good point, because I think we might have left without that, but he, he said, I think we could be up on the list.
Yes.
So hopefully, we're...
We're first again.
You know, we, yeah, we're number one as far as underfunded, so, I mean, let's hope they can reverse that, the first show, the last show be first, you know, that expression?
Yeah, that's right.
So we're kind of hoping that comes true this time. Basically, that was the gist of that meeting, but like I said, we went down there, kind of hat in hand, I thought they treated us fairly to some degree. Would have been nice if we came back with a suitcase full of money, but that didn't happen, so. But there is some hope, I guess, you know, any...
If I could add, if you don't mind, Mr. President, my understanding is regardless of how much money they loan us, it's interest-free. It might be two, if not three billion dollars, or possibly more. My understanding, having read in one of the newspapers, Lakewood had that same loan, it was approximately two million dollars, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, I understand that the state monitor will stay in Bayonne until that loan, whatever that amount of money is, is paid off, whether it be two, or three, or four, or five years. The state monitor remains with us until that loan is paid back to the state.
That was correct. The monitor would be here until that's done. They did mention that if everything looks good, the monitor takes less of an active issue as time goes on, but I think they would, they would be directly involved with us until that loan was paid off.
But regardless of the state monitor being, that's contingent on the fact that we have a loan, so the monitor will be here just we have a loan?
No, that, the monitor is coming whether we take the loan or don't take the loan.
Okay. At whose expense is the, is the monitor's salary?
That is our expense.
Do you know how much the expense is?
They didn't tell us that.
They didn't, sorry.
But I guess we, you know, that's what, part of the loan, I guess, would be taking the monitor's salary out of the loan that we receive. But they didn't give us an option as to whether we wanted a monitor, and they didn't give us an option as to whether we wanted to pay a monitor, so.
So the monitor has nothing to do with...
I mean, we're down there telling them we're in financial trouble, and they're telling us, you're paying this other salary, so it's kind of, that was kind of strange.
Well, the monitor coming in really has nothing to do then with the state's offer to give us an interest-free loan.
He is, yes. He's the one who could actually, I think, would say, yes, this is a good idea.
I would like to clarify further, because I think...
Talk into the mic.
The monitor is not an option. Whether the, a loan doesn't automatically come, they will make sure we are eligible before they tell us all about it, which is why we don't know a number and anything like that, but the monitor is coming, period, with or without money. And that's... So trustee Desmond, what's the prerequisite for the loan, then? We don't know. They decide.
I would think it would be based on the monitor saying our needs and our assessment of what situation we're in.
So we don't know?
We don't know an amount, no, or exactly when.
It's not going to impact this, this year's budget, though?
It's a possibility, yes, but it's a possibility it wouldn't, that's, that's the problem. That's why we really, I don't think, such as tonight's meeting, or, we really can't look at that as money that we would have, because we just wouldn't be able to do so.
Did the state give us any kind of a timeline where we would have an answer to that?
No.
No.
They were very, they're not big on giving you dates, or times, or amounts, you know, when it comes to that, I don't think they like to give an answer that they can't...
They don't like to hold themselves accountable.
Right, exactly.
They just like to mandate.
Yes.
They don't want to hold themselves accountable to anything.
So I have a question. So, we went to this Thursday meeting in the hopes of trying to attempt to repurpose the rod grants, right? That didn't happen.
Correct.
Then we, did we advocate for any emergency aid, any funding of that nature? We did ask, right?
Yes.
Okay. So they wouldn't give us emergency aid or funding like they've given Lakewood and New Brunswick, but they offered us an interest-free loan?
Well, they did, as far as, as far as the money going, that Speaker Freido, I think, said that he's working on a bill that would generate the money, that would be...
Right, right now, it's a loan that we would have to pay back from future budgets.
Well, they guarantee, they promised us...
Over ten years.
It'd be a loan, yes.
Right, over ten, so it's kicking the can down the road, that's what it's doing.
So to speak.
Which is exactly the same type of thinking that I feel, and I believe, as a trustee and as a taxpayer, that got us in this problem in the first place. So I don't understand how the state, we went to a meeting to advocate for funding, basically hat in hand, and they said, no, don't worry about it, we'll give you a loan, that we have to pay back, that, that didn't accomplish anything.
Listen, we set up a meeting on our own through our attorney, all the same people, different, different commissioner, but similar meeting was set up months ago, it got canceled, people were in the parking lot even, and they, they were told it's off. It got rescheduled, possibly because there was a new commissioner coming.
Right.
Which would make sense, but it got rescheduled not through us, but through the Assemblyman. I think, I do think people are trying to help us through this, but none of it's really what we need. What we need is the funding.
We need the funding, loans, stop, stopgap loans.
Well, that's, that's a position we've probably been for the last, I don't know, how many years? How many years have we been the number one underfunded, Mr. Smith?
Two thousand and eight.
Since 2008, we've been asking the same question, so it's not, it's not an answer that they're quick to give.
When does the monitor get here?
June 1st.
June 1st?
No.
No.
They didn't set a time?
They didn't give us a date.
It was discussed, it was mentioned, but there's no exact anything about it.
There was no dates, like I said, given, no, they just assured us we were getting one, and they kind of assured us that if everything was okay, they would give us a loan. That's, that's the two things they said.
It's a real big reason why you don't count on it.
They didn't say anything about the coming July 1st, they didn't say the money's coming...
But they approved our budget.
They did approve the budget.
It's a balanced budget now.
It's a balanced budget. I know that, not balance the budget, I know, yes.
And they did say, if I could say that, they did say that, looking at what has been going on here, that they felt we're going in the right direction, and, so I think that was something positive, at least, you know, that came from both...
They actually thanked us.
Yes, from the work that we're doing, you know, and that came from the commissioner and the speaker. And actually, some of the people that worked behind the scenes, who was sort of like, kind of like giving us a little bit of a test early on, seemed to be turning a little bit, saying, yeah, I do think that they're working very hard, so, or no, I think they think we're in the right, you know, they believe we're going in the right direction.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board and the public, tonight, we'll present to you the budget for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year. This budget is the work of many days of hard work and very, very hard decisions, as you all know. This budget has the input of board trustees, who have met numerous times, the central office and administrative staff. I'd like to thank Dr. McGinn for her time, effort, input and energy, and always keeping us on task. I'd also like to thank our new accountant, Matt Bolden, for putting together this balanced budget. Laura Zalzinecki, our bookkeeper, Loriann Mariano and Christina Ellison, for their combined attention to all the details of putting this budget together, as well as all... as all the other board members who sat through numerous meetings, whether it be personnel, finance, or curriculum. This budget will result in a local tax levy increase of two percent, and utilize the bank cap and medical waiver for an additional three point two, three point six-two percent, totaling an overall increase of five point six-two percent. This equates to an overall dollar amount of three million five hundred thirty-one dollars, three million five hundred thousand thirty-one and six hundred and eighteen dollars. This equals an overall tax increase on the average assessed property in the city of Bayonne of thirty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents per quarter, or a hundred and fifty dollars and twenty cents per year. The board approved the budget at its March sixteenth meeting. It was submitted to the county department of education on March twentieth, the board received the approved budget from the county on May third, and it was advertised in the Jersey Journal on May fourth. If the board accepts this budget tonight, it will go into effect on July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. These budgets were sent home over the weekend by Dr. Maida and my office for the trustees to review. We can now entertain any questions that you might have on the overall budget.
What is the major difference? What did you do to the budget, the original budget, to change it so it was accepted? What, I mean, we, we, I know we did the Rod Grant, now we're not going to utilize the Rod Grant, I understand that, were there other changes made to the budget besides factoring in the Rod Grant money?
They were looking at the, us putting money aside for unemployment due to the RIF, that was one of their areas of concern. The book deal had to be tweaked, the book buyback deal, they wanted to correct numbers on that, and the new tax rate, how much it would impact the tax rate payers. Those were the three areas of concern. The numbers basically were tweaked due to the increase in the, in the tax, overall tax rate.
Second question, then, if we as a board bring back some of the employees that were originally RIF'd, does that impact the unemployment insurance?
Yeah, well, the fewer people we have on unemployment as of July first, the lower will get assessed later on, there's going to be a lag time, but, yeah, the, the budget contemplated bringing back the vast majority of the, the majority of the RIFs, as Joe, President Roger pointed out at the last meeting we had.
So my understanding is the budget read initially like one million short for the unemployment, so if we bring back like two-thirds, well, how much money will we realize in the budget for the unemployment, or am I not understanding this correctly?
Based the unemployment forecast on the original budgeted layoffs that were going to occur, so if we actually did lay off the full two hundred and sixty teachers, the unemployment cost would be dramatically higher than what we have in the budget.
So the mil, the million is about less, less than the projected layoff?
The million, no, the million is an actual estimate based on our budgeted layoffs.
Perhaps you could take a second and explain, the, the unemployment is assessed after the punishment of a fund, so it doesn't, it's not happening now.
Right, it's going to happen after the fact, the state's going to come back to charge us for the amount of people that actually, you know, twenty-six weeks there to get unemployment, there's caps, the teachers would hit that cap. You know, it's also based on about half of our teachers that were finding work, that may, you know, actual results may differ, as a disclaimer, and then, the other staff at a, at a higher, significantly higher rate, that are forecasted to draw down unemployment.
The money that is in there now, it's constantly being put in, it's part of, it's a withhold from federal, but.
We actually have a balance right now, a significant balance.
But it's a drawdown going forward, but something like this happens, it's a significant change.
Right.
The unemployment?
The unemployment, we, we have money now.
Unemployment, they bill us, right now, the reimbursement billing is done quarterly, so they bill us quarterly for any claims that are filed within.
I know, I was just hoping, explaining it, I don't actually do it.
Can you explain to everybody how the process went, from the first budget that we presented, and it was rejected by the state, then what happened? The state came back and gave us a counteroffer, or did we, you said rejected it, what happened exactly?
Well, they rejected it for those, the three reasons that I mentioned.
Okay.
The lack of unemployment insurance, and then there was an oversight because of the RIF. The original RIF, I think, was fifty-eight, Matt?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-eight educators.
Fifty-six.
The book deal was originally three point, three million, and then it went to three point nine million, and then the tax rate went up from what the board originally looked at, four point, four point?
Three point three five.
Three point nine five to five point six-two, so those were the three areas.
Yeah, but once the state rejected it.
Oh, sorry, it, it's.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all right.
Where I, I can't.
Once, once the state rejected the budget, what happened from there? Did they come back and say, this is the number that you have to go up to, this is the number that you have to bring up the book to?
Yes.
Yes.
They said that, this is the specific number?
They called it exactly what they would ask.
We didn't go back and forth with the state, we'll go up to this much, we'll go, okay?
We had a series of conference calls with them, and it happened to be the week that everybody was off, I was in Florida, superintendent, central office was here, Matt was in South Jersey, and even Joe Zarro was on the, the county superintendent was in the, a parking lot on the side of the New Jersey Turnpike, and we conference called for about an hour and a half, one day, I think it was that Thursday, after they rejected it, and they say, you need to do these three things in order to get, in order to get the budget, yes, in order to get the budget approved.
Do you have a microphone?
What is that, five point six is? No, no, so, so the sum up, the state mandated a five point six-two percent tax increase?
Well, didn't, didn't they mandate whatever the bank cap would be?
Which was, which was that number?
Yeah.
Which was a good idea.
She's trying to sum it up, read it all.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this?
Because the other questions will be for inside on, on number eight. That's it.
There are number nine.
That is number nine.
That is number nine.
Okay, so the rest of the budget questions will be for closed session, that is all the business I have for outside, everything else is for inside, so we are going to adjourn the open workshop, and we're going to go into a closed session for legal and personnel items, the board will return in the auditorium, and it is seven o'clock.